Okay, meeting for February 16th will come to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight Commissioner Abraham will lead us in our invocation. And our pledge of allegiance tonight is Addie and Kate Rogers, and they are Paducah Tillman High School freshmen, so glad to have you all back. So Commissioner, let's stand.
Father, we're trying to heaven, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for the opportunity that you continually give us to do the right thing, make the right decisions, treat each other with kindness. Father, we realize that you are the standard we strive to reach. Help us in our daily challenges as thoughts and motives come. Help us to realize those things are negative and push those negative thoughts aside. Help us to realize that we have opportunities every day to build in each other's lives. The blessing is in the recognition. Help us recognize that which you have set forth for us. These things we ask in your shoes' name. Amen.
Amen.
I'm finally...
...dance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, any additions or deletions?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, we'll go on with our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, I believe you had the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for February 9th, 2016 city commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we have a few appointments tonight. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Bernice Belt and Raphael Banks as member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. These terms will expire July 24th, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Bernice Belt and Raphael Banks as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Bill Pinkston and Neil Carroll as members of the Brooks Stadium Commission. These terms will expire December 5th, 2019, and December 31st, 2019 respectively. Furthermore, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint William Cox as a member of the Brooks Stadium Commission to replace Leo Green, whose term has expired. This term will expire December 5th, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a recommendation of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Bill Pinkston, Neil Carroll, and appointing William Cox as members of the Brooks Stadium Commission.
City clerk?
I need a second.
Oh, a second.
Second. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive, I hereby appoint Kelm Burchard as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board to fill the unexpired term of Becky Straley. This term will expire December 31st, 2017.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive and appointing Kelm Burchard as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. As always, we want to thank all of these citizens that do service to the community by being on our boards and do a good job of it. Thank you. On to our motions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificate of liability insurance and right-of-way bond for Wiggins Concrete Construction, quick claim deed with Richard and Carol Roof and Medlin and Arthur U-L-L-O-M. How do you pronounce that?
Ullam?
Ullam?
Ullam, okay. For inside half of Army Circle and a portion of Garden Path. Quick claim deed with Richard and Carolyn Roof for outside half of Army Circle and a portion of Garden Path. Contract with Artists and Contractors of Kentucky LLC for the 432 Broadway Building new wall closure. Bids for Park Services Department contract for city-owned lots, grounds, maintenance, Kinsey Lawn and Landscape.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. On to our municipal orders. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application and all documents necessary for a reimbursement grant for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $30,888 through the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for funding to be used for overtime hours associated with specific traffic enforcement for the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. It's our annual application for the traffic enforcement grant that we apply for through the Office of Highway Safety. This reimburses salaries and benefits for the officers on working overtime to address traffic-related issues such as seatbelt usage, distracted driving, speeding, and those type things. There is zero match for this grant.
Even better.
Even better.
What happens to the fines? Where does that go?
All the money is from fines on citations issued goes to the state of Kentucky.
Thank you.
Zero comes back to the city of Paducah. Good question.
Thanks for asking that because that is a question people ask a lot.
All the time.
Well, I guess you all are really making a lot of money off those tickets.
Zero. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the ordinance introduction.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting the bid for grounds maintenance of the city-owned properties and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Kinsey Lawn and Landscape in the amount of $17 per cut per lot for grounds maintenance of approximately 130 city-owned properties and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This contract is for the remainder of 2016 calendar and 2017 and lasts for the renewal up to three additional, one-year periods.
Aye, second. Alice?
Aye. Just basically kind of just go over kind of what we did on the opening of that. First of all, honored to be here, appreciate the coming here. You all basically kind of ran through most of it. It's basically 130 lots, and they're throughout the city. We mow them on a roughly, we have the contractor mow them on a bi-weekly basis. We had a mandatory pre-bid back in several weeks ago, and we had three bidders that attended that mandatory meeting. Of that, the following week, we opened bids. We had one bid, and that was from Kinsey's, and that was $3 cheaper than what it was the year prior. The contract is good for two years, and it'll have basically one-year renewals for three years. So, got any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have one. When the winning bid, that gets the contract, they go out, they cut the grass, what else? Do they cut the grass? Do they weed eat?
Yes, they, yeah.
Do they, you know, bag all that stuff up?
No, they do not. Most of that goes there. They blow it off sidewalks. Most of it is right there on the lot there as far as that. Usually, we get a call or a concern, we'll make sure they go back and take care of that. Usually, very minimum. We usually don't have a lot of that.
Is that something that's in the contract?
Yes, it is in the contract, yeah.
Okay.
So if they're mowed bi-weekly, they don't really get that high? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct, right. There is so many lots, and they do vary from, you know, month to month.
Unless you have a really rainy month, then they might grow more, but...
Right. Some areas, you know, for example, if we're having events or something in a particular area, we'll put an extra mow in an area like that.
And these are just lots that we have acquired?
Correct. Those are through, usually those come through, we'll purchase those through, you know, liens and things of that nature.
The reason I answer that question is because, you know, if city-owned lots, we're held to a higher standard than the average citizen because, you know, we'll put a tag on a lot if the grass is too high or...
Correct.
You know, if you've got debris, things like that. So, you know, if we're gonna, gotta set the standard.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, tonight we have a workshop, and we have a couple of items on the workshop tonight. And the first is food trucks. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, Mr. City Manager. Ms. Clerk. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of food truck ordinances in other communities and to receive city commission input on how planning staff may move forward with the Paducah Planning Commission. I'd like to go over the background of some food truck information. What is mobile vending? Some of the pros and cons, as I've seen it, on mobile vending? Things to consider? Various regulations we may have to consider? And then, once again, what should planning staff do next? Food trucks are popular, and the growth of mobile food trucks will soar in the next few years as it has in the last three or four years, generating up to 2.7 billion in revenue nationally by 2017, up from 650 million in 2012. Paducah has had job site lunch trucks, ice cream trucks, gourmet food trucks want to join them. I know there's several neighborhoods right now that ice cream trucks actually visit. If you remember, several years ago, we actually had some job site trucks that used to go out to various businesses and serve sandwiches and stuff at lunchtime. Paducah has several inquiries about food trucks in the last several years, approximately five to six. Currently not allowed, they're not allowed except in the HBD zone. This is a picture of the HBD zone in Paducah. It roughly goes from, on US 60, from Paducah forward, generally out to almost all of Church Road, and then on Lone Oak Road from I-24 to Bleach Road. Those are the areas currently in Paducah that, really the only areas that we allowed outdoor sales. Courier shops, roadside stands, t-shirt sales, but also we would allow food trucks within those locations. So we're talking about expanding from these locations, which have historically been the only two, to other parts of the city. Mobile food vending is often in the form of food trucks or trailers that are easily relocated throughout a community. This is a picture of several examples of food trucks. You know what that is, Pam? Lots of different resources exist. Right in the middle says National Food Truck Organization. If it was the wish of this commission to move forward on something like this, we have a lot of resources from different communities as well as organizations to pull data from. Some of the pros and negatives now. With a reasonable barrier to entry, it provides an opportunity to increase jobs in businesses. You know, the startup cost of a food truck may be 20,000 or 25,000 where a traditional bricks-and-mortar business, it may be upwards of 300,000 to start a business. It could offer opportunities to provide choices where restaurants don't exist. Food trucks bring food service to the market for limited hours, serve populations that may currently not have pedestrian-oriented type of choices. An example of that is maybe the Information Age Park. If they were allowed there during lunch hours, that would, just an example of a possibility. It can increase activity in the city by creating a dynamic environment where people gather around the availability of new and fresh food. It can be a way to energize an area. Quite often, food trucks use social media to tell people about their product and where they're going to be. And also, food truck rallies who bring multiple food vendors to one location can create an atmosphere, a festive-type atmosphere. I've seen these quite often in parks. For instance, the 13th Street Park, when it's done, it could be a place where two or three food trucks could show up on a Saturday afternoon for more of a festive-type atmosphere. Just a couple pictures. One's advertising on the upper left showing a celebration, and one on the lower right is a park where they're having food trucks for the afternoon. It could signal to other potential businesses that the community is adapting to the evolving economy and supporting entrepreneurship. Mobile food trucks are new in Kentucky. Louisville, I believe, is the oldest. Covington probably the newest, but there's several across the state that have, now have food truck ordinances in place. Communities that anticipate the demand from businesses and consumers may also find that this flexibility signals receptivity to new business models. It is a way for restaurants to test the local market, restaurateurs to test the local market for future bricks-and-mortar facilities. Mobile food trucks offer opportunities to interact with the potential market, test recipes and pricing, and see if the restaurant is a fit within the community here in Paducah. Some of the community impacts and conflicts, perceived and real, maintenance and appearance, trash, possible noise, parking, is it on public property or private property, vehicular and pedestrian circulation. The biggest conflict is, is, it is their conflict with the existing bricks-and-mortar businesses within your community. And I'll speak about that a little bit more in a second. Others, operation challenges on the side of the operator of the food truck. There's unpredictable weather, there's inventory management, the market. If staff was given direction to move forward, we would start by defining what a food truck is, and then consider each of the following questions. How long should a food truck be permitted in one location? Should it be just food or other goods? Can they be sold as well? Do we want to increase activity in a certain part of our community? How do you address upkeep and maintenance, not only of the site, but also the actual food truck? What hours can food truck operate? How are customer parking and circulation accommodated? Do we limit the number of food trucks, or even on a test period? How are food trucks reviewed and permitted? What do the vendors and the customers want or need? How is signage handled? How is the site lit? How do we handle garbage that's associated with a food truck? How should the food be served? And special events? Food truck rallies are growing, as I mentioned earlier. On location, some communities place a minimum distance between mobile units and bricks-and-mortar restaurants, or a distance requirement between mobile units and residential districts or limit hours of operation. We would need to test location restrictions to ensure that realistic business opportunities exist within our community. National League of Cities suggests no greater than 200 feet. However, consider context, 200 feet could exclude most locations in a downtown area. Some communities use 50 to 100 feet. If we moved forward, we'd have to do some type of spatial analysis, locate the existing restaurants downtown for existence, for instance, and then find out how those different measurements play out in the real world. Clearly-defined terms are important component. They need to be clear and comprehensive. What state regulations apply? What local regulations apply? How do we permit without being onerous? Under location, should food trucks be allowed to serve in front of, let's say, the art school, around the hospital, at the proposed health park on 13th Street? Or downtown? These are just all questions. Do we limit food trucks to just the riverfront, on the riverside? What about parks? Easily-defined areas make it easier to regulate. I think if we decided to move forward, we'd want to be very concise with our regulations so they're easy to regulate, and we know exactly where food trucks would have to be in our community. Public property versus private property. There's a wide variety of regulations on hours. City of Chicago requires no more than two hours. The National League of City recommends four hours or longer. Should be just over lunch. I believe Covington allows them just over lunch. Concerns over adjacent property can dictate duration. What goods available for sale? Probably, in Paducah's case, probably food is the best alternative. Some communities do allow all types of apparel or even books, for instance. Standards for trash removal vary, often depending on the duration and location of the vending. I think we would want to require waste receptacles. We require them to be emptied daily. Would we allow sitting? If you allow sitting, usually more trash generation is required. Hours of operation. Consider potential impacts of hours on adjacent land uses. Office and industrial parks may limit to breakfast and lunchtimes. Other areas may serve a dinner crowd. License and permits. Permits or licenses, whether on private or public property, most communities require this. How many permits and how much? Cold compliance with local health and other codes. Some communities cap license available for food trucks, which can be a good way to test regulations as well as impact. Side amenities. Some communities do not allow tables and chairs. If we allow tables, should we require sanitary facilities? Condament stands? And signage? In a lot of cases, the mobile unit itself functioned as the sign. Most mobile vendors rely on social media for their advertising. Lighting, don't see it as typically a concern, but if there is lighting on the truck, I think we'd want to regulate that so it doesn't spill onto adjacent land uses. To recap, food trucks can be considered to be in competition with existing brick-and-mortar restaurants. Food trucks can be a great tool to energize space, provide food options where they are limited, encourage entrepreneurship and business growth, engage residents and visitors in a community. Communities may consider standards that address location, duration, goods available, number of units at one time, trash maintenance, hours of operation, licenses, permits, side amenities, signage, and lighting. And the question that I started out with is, how would you like us to proceed? We could defer the amendments at this time, of course, or we could proceed with a planning commission to draft a food truck ordinance, most likely through an advisory council either created by the commission or the planning commission. And I would certainly be happy to answer any questions if you would like to ask them.
Steve, are these usually locally owned, then?
Most typically, yes.
I have seen them in, for example, in Nashville at festivals.
They're, for the most, they can travel, but most likely they're vested in their communities just because of the time it requires for them to prepare to sell their product. Quite often, food trucks, they're getting up early, they're preparing their product, they're going out to a site and selling for several hours, and they're going back and breaking down. So usually, they're vested within the community.
So that, it would not be just for festivals, it could be for every day?
That's right.
That they would have a mobile unit, go set up somewhere and sell?
Depending on all these things I've talked about. Hours, location, all those types of things. But it could be drafted, for instance, that two food trucks would be allowed at the riverfront during these hours, and they could go every day if they wanted, if that was put in place. That's correct.
So those would all be part of drafting the ordinance?
Yeah, a lot of questions to be answered as part of the ordinance.
Well, I think it's a, it's an opportunity for individuals to take the initiative to go into business for themselves. I see the challenge for us is a couple of things. One, obviously taking in the consideration of our brick-and-mortar restaurants. And two, not to over-regulate it. You don't want to create an environment where it's, by the time you get through the red tape, it's like, what's the point?
Right.
I think there are some areas here in the city that, that could use, that would be available, just depending on how we, how we put it together. So I think it's, it's an opportunity for the city and entrepreneurs to, to get involved in the food truck. I mean, they're, they're coming, they're, they're in like, the information that we got in our package, it was, it was extensive. You know, it's a lot of different ways to put this together, and, you know, our challenge is to, to put it together that's fair. And keeping in mind those aforementioned, for our restaurants, and I just don't want, if we're going to do this, to saddle with so many regulations that it's, it's a turn off.
So we already have some food trucks in the city, right? In certain areas? They're allowed in certain areas?
They're allowed, but more so, we have roadside stands, I believe. Lemonade stands, those types of things. As far as moving food trucks at this time, I'm not aware of any.
So, and what's the difference between a food truck, like we're talking here, and the mobile units that are at barbecue and, you know...
I was just gonna ask you. I mean, the guy who sells funnel cakes and deep-fried sticks of butter and...
Yeah.
What I would call...
Huh? Oh. Those are...
These, you know, quite often, the, you know, the food trucks, the food trucks, from what I've seen, are trying to, to find their niche in the market. They're bringing something different to the table, whether it be, you know, gourmet-type foods or something else. And they're, they're working through that to try to find out, once again, what they can, they can sell. They are mobile. Most all of these that I've seen, they're driving them. I mean, they're a complete restaurant, you would say, on wheels. They made all health codes.
Not a trailer.
Not a trailer. That would be a question that we would have to address within the ordinances, but most of the ones I'm aware of, they're actually driving from one location to another.
Let me ask you this, and I'm not sure that I'm accurate in this, I guess I'm sort of, it's sort of a comment and a question at the same time. It appears that Cape, Carbondale, Bowling Green, Henderson, and Hopkinsville do not have food trucks, nor food truck ordinances, or nothing. And I guess I was surprised, I would've thought Carmel with the university and, well, they've got probably 20,000 students at SIU, would be my guess. If we check with them, why are they not doing anything?
At this time, Commissioner, I have not. If I was given direction, one of the first things I was going to do was start to explore these other communities more, maybe even taking a trip and sitting down with their community development departments, for instance, and talking about the goods and bads of the ordinances before we proceed forward. I know, I'm not familiar with Kew, Gerardo, but I know I've been to Carbondale, and they have some versions of food trucks there, but Bowling Green, I know, does not have it at this point. I think Covington's the most recent.
Have you talked to, well, Owensboro probably is more the size of us in Little or Lexington. They have, do have that now?
Yes, they do.
And are they setting up, I mean, what are they seeing from it?
We have that graph, and I don't have it in front of me right now, and I have not reached out to these communities at this time. That would most likely be the next step within the advisory group, is starting to actually sit down and go through, sift through all the information that we would collect, and that has not been done at this point from each community.
I mean, why wouldn't we give the people the opportunity, opportunity to do this? Because it is very entrepreneurial. We're not going to be inundated with food trucks here in Paducah because they're, they're pretty expensive to put together, so, you know, we're not going to have 50 food trucks out there. And, you know, it's a good way to show that we're interested in something different here in Paducah. The young people love the food trucks. They're great for festivals. I know, I looked at a place in Where to Retire, and it was Winchester, Virginia. You'd love it, Sandra. They have this beautiful riverfront, and it has a big stage for events, and they'll have food trucks come in and have festivals there with the food trucks. And then they have, they have an ice skating rink in the winter, and then they have, they have a lot of the things we'd like to have, but, you know, they do bring the food trucks into that mix.
It's almost like a food truck pop-up festival-type thing.
Right, right.
I guess I see it at some of the events, like, like a pop-up festival or the current festivals that we have. I guess I'm questioning on a day-to-day basis, having it come downtown and, and park?
I was, when he said the Commerce Center, I mean, my goodness, there's no place there. You have to take...
At the, yeah, the Commerce Park, the Information Age Park.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think all those things would have to be determined in the way that the ordinance was written. There may not be a need for that. There may be a need for that, and we may want to distinguish some geographical area where that stops the border or, and let festivals choose or not choose, just depending on, I think all those things we probably would have to discuss, depending on your research. I mean, it appears to me that that's the beauty of having your own ordinance, in concert with the Health Department.
Absolutely.
What's, what's the difference in, like a peach truck that comes through in the summer[1754.88] and sells their peaches?
You know, if, yes, we allow that right now, for instance, at the farmer's market downtown, or in those places on US 60 or at Lone Oak Road. You see those. And those are those two locations that we allow those different types of roadside stands.
Steve, I think it's important that we be understood, if I in fact understand this correctly, that this concept is about somebody parking someone, something in a relatively designated area on a regular basis. This is not event/festival driven necessarily, correct?
That's correct, for a certain period of time, and that can all be defined.
I, I really get excited about government's role in creating an environment where individuals can be successful. And this sounds like an opportunity that we can do that. Like Commissioner God said, we can put together an ordinance however we want to put it together. Designated areas, if that's the way we want to go, then that's, that's great. But I think we should allow our planning guys to go on and look and see what other communities are doing, and then come back to, and if we choose to do that, put together our own food truck ordinance and, and let, and let the market do its thing.
I certainly would, would want Steve to go ahead and move forward and bring something to us, however you need to do it.
Well, I'd be welcome, I'd be, I'd like to get the community input too, as far as what the community feels like if they really want to embrace that. I mean, I'm assuming they have to have a business license. If they're locally owned, hopefully they're going to be part of the community. They're not just going to come in and, you know, not be a part of us.
After all, the research, my thoughts is, it would, it would be some type of advisory committee put together that would be made up of a cross-section of people that would be having that, receiving that public input. Ultimately, this would be a text amendment with the, the planning commission, so certainly a public hearing would be required. But on something of this magnitude, we'd probably be having public meetings before even the public hearing with the planning commission.
But you still need a starting point, and I think what we're saying is, and kind of check out what the best practices are, what the more common approaches. For example, I would guess that most cities that have this don't allow the Elvis paintings to be sold, you know, on the side of the thing. It's food only, I would guess, you know, for example. So as you kind of survey other cities, you would find out what the typical lay of the land is on a lot of the issues that you raise in this presentation.
Yes.
It might be something.
Really, this is just saying, we would allow you to continue to study it, to develop whether or not, or, I guess, to study it and get public input. And maybe a draft ordinance, is that what you're?
There's two different ways this could happen. You could allow me to move forward and go to the planning commission and work out a lot of these issues with the planning commission, or I could internally with staff, start to look at it and come back with another presentation with a little bit more refined information than what I have right now.
I think the latter would be, what I was referring to, is check out what the lay of the land is in other cities, what the most common approaches to these several dozen issues are.
Right.
It'd give you more information to know if you're comfortable with taking the formal step of turning it over to the planning commission.
That gives us time to talk to people, local people, and see if we really feel like there is a need in some areas for it. In some areas, there's probably not, but.
Well, this would be the time to do that research. This, this will be the time to do it.
Okay.
I guess I gotta say, and I'm really conflicted. Here, I'm a business person, I'm supposed to be honest.
You should do a coffee truck. It's an opportunity.
But, you know, I guess I, I look at our city, I think, okay, this isn't where we have 500 people who walk out of an office building, holding for a quick bite, or thousands of tourists who come ripping into our downtown to look at or whatever.
Except during the quilt show.
Yeah, and then you get all the funnel trucks, funnel cake trucks. I guess, maybe I'm putting my own head on it, but I'm just not that wound up about it. And I, and we've talked, I know, you know, in fact, we talked to ladies yesterday when I was going to the paint store in Philadelphia. But, hey, I'm just.
Well, and I see your concern, because I have some of that too. And I have some that they would come in and buy a business license and not really be part of our community. I, I would want them to run it like a business that is a part of the community.
Now, there haven't been that many that I've talked to, Sandra, but the two that have approached me about it are local citizens that would like to have.
Would like to start a business.
That have businesses in Paducah right now.
And they even want to start another one. But, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with you exploring it and finding out more information.
Maybe I can get excited, but I'm just not very excited. Does the State Health Department, I mean, I assume they would have?
Plumbing inspector.
Well.
I hope so.
I know they, you know, I mean, they can dog star play.
Make it really difficult.
Well, I mean, I mean, of course, they're going to have to be held to the same standard. No one.
Right.
So, see, this is what I'm saying. I mean, really.
Let's not overthink it.
Whatever ordinance that we come up with will be, will be legal, legally binding. I mean, you gotta, you gotta adhere to what we say, where we want this thing. And if it ever gets to that point, then, then we move forward. I mean, I, I'm not, if it's food they're selling, okay, what kind of food? Okay, we're not, are we talking deep fried butter, or are we talking gourmet food here? You know, wait, I mean, I don't want to be in the guy's kitchen. I don't want to be in the guy's kitchen. If we, if we've set the standard, look, this is what you gotta buy by, right? If they do that, if they do that, then, then, then go for it, man.
Steve, you have a good idea of how to proceed, don't you?
Just not overthink that.
Okay, you should think about that, Alan.
No. I have to say, Grisso.
Okay, our next workshop is on stormwater system plan proposal.
Want to, it's got a title.
So you can follow along a little bit, if you want to make notes. You can do that. Kind of feels like, kind of feels like back in school when you were afraid of the pop quiz, when the teacher handed it out and you weren't prepared. So, anyway. I'm here as a stand-in this evening because your stormwater and drainage engineer who works in our department, Eric Hickman, is a proud new father of an eight-pound, nine-ounce baby girl that they had last night about this same time. So he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here to give the presentation for him that he's worked real hard on to put together and has done an outstanding job on this. I hope you all find it to be informative and useful, because you're going to need to over the next several, I guess, months. So with that being said, I'm just going to get started, go through this. You all might be hungry from, from food trucks or whatever, but I'll go through this. We're talking about the City of Paducah Stormwater and Drainage Plan. We're going to talk about a little outline here for a minute. We're going to talk about our geography, our existing storm sewer system, our responsibilities, the problems we have. We're going to talk about some solutions, maybe, funding, and other, what other Kentucky communities are doing. Paducah's geography, one thing you might think about, Paducah is generally flat. We're only about 350 to 400 feet above sea level, that's 1,000 miles away. So you think about that slope between us and, and the oceans, we're not very high above sea level. We have, majority of our drainage problems are, the city originate from the natural geography. You know, if it's sloped, it'll run off. If it's flat, it won't. Located on the Ohio River at the mouth of the Tennessee River, natural flood plain for the Ohio River. Actually, we have several rivers, Mississippi, Ohio, Tennessee, Cumberland, Wabash, and that are all near us, 46 miles upstream from the Mississippi River. You got nearly 204,000 square miles, over 130 million acres, that are around us, 46 square miles that are associated with us, almost 30,000 acres of drainage through the city limits that don't necessarily originate here. A lot of the drainage that comes through the city originate outside our boundaries and come into the city. Little bit, this map may help, and then again, it may not. You'll notice the lines, we call it contour lines, they're little squiggly lines out near the interstate. But I wanted to bring this up because where you have a lot of lines, that means you have a lot of slope. And where you don't have any lines, you're generally flat. So when you look in the gridded area of Paducah, you don't see many of those contour lines. But then when you get out toward the west and the south, you see some hill, hill country and, and some things of that nature. So it kind of gives you a little bit of the geography there. System makeup. Our present stormwater infrastructure is operated and maintained by the city engineer and Public Works Department. We've got about 110 miles of separate storm sewer system. Now, this is important to understand. You have separate storm sewer systems and you have combined systems where you have sanitary and storm running together. Over 6,000 inlets, 40% are connected to combined sewers, and that's an estimate, that's not an exact number. 313 miles of streams, only a small portion of those creeks are owned by the City of Paducah. Okay, a lot of times, you'll have complaints that there's a creek behind you all, but are, are behind a property. That may belong to the property owner, but since it's big, they think that maybe the municipality or government needs to do something with it. More than, we have nine miles of riverfront, you might think of it that way. We're at mile marker 935 on the Ohio, so that'll give you some idea of how much comes by us. Flood protection system is an integral part of the stormwater system. The flood, flood wall and division responsibility operating and maintain. We have three miles of concrete levee, we have nine miles of earthen levee, 12 pump stations. Now, why would I bring that in here? All of the drainage that's collected within seven square miles of the city, the flood wall actually protects 15 square miles of the city and county, but seven miles of it has to be physically pumped out when the river is in an elevated state. So that means that as the stormwater is collected during a rainfall event, it has to be physically pumped out when the river's above 27 and a half feet. I know I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you, but it's just the way our system's built. Paducah is a network, has a network of combined sewers. It's a unique situation of ownership of combined sewers. We have JSA that operates and maintains our sanitary sewer system, and the combined sewers are a portion of that maintenance. City operates and maintains a storm inlet and laterals that are tied into that, the trunk lines of the combined sewer. Now, I want to touch on that point a little bit, because a lot of times, in Commissioner Abraham, where you live, near 19th Street, you know, you'll, there's a storm inlet that's out there curbside, and you may smell an odor or something that has a sanitary sewer smell to it. Well, you're near, when you smell that, you're near a combined sewer. And the way this is arranged is, that surface inlet collects the water from the surface, but it puts it in a combined sewer that goes to the treatment plant. And the relationship there is, the collection on, on the surface is actually our asset, but once it enters the main, it becomes JSA's flow. So this is the unique, I guess, relationship we have with JSA. And 69 miles of combined sewers. Responsibilities. The City of Paducah's Engineering Public Works Department, we're responsible for the public health and safety and welfare of our citizens to the best of our ability. Our water quality from stormwater runoff, that's something that's been more recently heavily regulated. Adequately maintain, operate, upgrade and replace existing stormwater and drainage systems, so that's something we're going to get into more in this discussion. Reducing the effects from flooding. We don't control it, all we can do is do the best we can when we get a deluge. Complying with Paducah Stormwater Phase Two, Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, that's a mouthful, SMS4 program that came out of the Clean Water Act. And in Kentucky, we're one of 102 cities that have this responsibility now. I'd like for you all to pay particular attention to that graphic. I think Eric did an outstanding job here with this, because it's, you know, depending on where you sit, where you stand, so to speak, the people in the back of the boat have the problem, but the people in the front of the boat think they're high and dry. Well, they're all in the same boat, so we all have the same problem, it's just, it's, it's not necessarily just individuals in one end, and that's the low end. This statement by Abraham Lincoln is something that we all have to think about. We can't put off tomorrow what we need to do today, in so many words. What is stormwater runoff? Okay, simply stated, I mean, as it rains, it's got to have somewhere to go, and the, the surface, whatever's on the surface dictates a lot of that, whether it's a natural undeveloped surface, or whether or not you have impervious surfaces like rooftops, sidewalks, roadways, parking lots. If it's concrete or asphalt, it's going to run off a whole lot more rapid than it will be if it's grass. Problem, one thing you want to look at here, some of the problems we have, our current stormwater system is aging and needs to be upgraded and/or replaced in many areas to provide public health and safety and welfare for flooding events. Systems are overcapacity, underdesigned and inundated with small and frequent rainfall events. Now, take your attention to that graphic or that table on the far side there. Eric actually collected census data for our population, and you'll notice that we had a population growth between 1930, and I would say in 1930 and 1940, or, excuse me, 1920 to 1930, had a big jump, but then you stayed the same. But all of it was in a, in the downtown area, a very smaller area of the, what I call the grid. And most of your systems were developed from 1900 to 1960 in the downtown area. You talk about greater populations between the 20s and 30s, the development increased during the time period, increasing impervious surface areas. Sure, as you build something new, you're going to build a driveway, you're going to build a new business, it's going to have a rooftop, it's not grass, you're turning it into impervious surfaces. Paducah Storm Sewer System Timeline, let's talk about that a little bit. The original infrastructure started in the 1900s. Work Progress Program Administration, WPA days. We, following the Depression, we had to put a lot of people to work in 1934 to 1942. You had a lot of, your infrastructure was built. A lot of that infrastructure is in place today that is incomplete. I would challenge you, out in the 30th Street, 32nd Street, you all will see castings in ditches where no curbs and gutters exist. That's where the WPA program got those things built, but it quit, and the curbs and gutters never got built to those inlets. So that's something that we, we deal with. Your Paducah flood wall was constructed from 39 to 49. The storm sewer, storm relief sewers were built in 1950s and the 1960s. But there's some parity that we need to pay attention to here, because from 19, well, until 1957, all of your sanitary waste, stormwater, everything went directly to the river, untreated. Okay? And the Paducah Storm Relief Sewers, plus the sewage treatment plant being built in 1957, changed a lot of that, because we were running a lot of, well, everything that's going through the combined sewers, if it's not overflowing, is going through the treatment plant. Majority of Paducah storm sewers are over 60 to 100 years old and overcapacity. Shows you some of the work that was done back in the WPA days. If you're, if you have anything to do with OSHA, you're probably shaking in your boots right now. These are not, these are not work practices of the day. It's amazing of what could be done, and the number of men and, and with the equipment that they had. This is actually a brick drying yard, where we were actually making our own bricks, putting them in the sun and drying them, doing, doing some excavation work, getting materials to make the bricks. I actually tried to find this house today, I actually believe this to be on Jefferson, but I don't think it is. But actually, you see the men installing storm sewers and, in place. Look at the number of men there, and notice, nobody's overweight there. There's no video games involved here. Here is actually a mule that is turning, I guess conveying to make brick. You can see another thing there, it's just somewhere we made brick. It's amazing what was done. Original system design, in the early 1900s, designed for an average storm period return, what we call a return of 15-year event, one-hour rainfall intensity for a 15-year event was about two inches per hour. Okay? Time of concentration, simply put, with your, if you're in a drainage basin, when the water comes down, it has so much time to get from the most remote point of the basin to its exit point. That's called the time of concentration. It's how long it takes to get from land in the basin to get out of it. And then runoff coefficient varied from .11 to .22. Now, if you look at modern, modern hydraulic calculations right now, for soil, just soil and grass, the runoff coefficient is used around .3 to .4. This is a particularly interesting number, because the difference between .3 and .4 and those numbers is off by a factor of two to three. Okay? That's the percentage of water that runs off. Okay? So now... So now when you start talking about grass is considered at point three today and back when it was designed, it was considered at point one. Okay? You can see a difference of three, which is indicating that your system is undersized. Deficiencies, fifteen-year storm, storm return period used in design is usually better than those recommended. However, if you'll notice from the nineteen hundreds to present, what was a fifteen-year event back in the nineteen hundreds is more considered in modern days as a five-year event. Because we do have some of these, I'm not a meteorologist, I'm not collecting this data. We deal with what they call rainfall intensity curves. We don't make the curves, other agencies and government do. So what was considered a fifteen-year storm in the nineteen hundreds is now a five-year storm. So our weather conditions are changing. Runoff coefficients, I talked about that a little bit earlier in the slide. Okay? So basically know where we're at. Okay? So now, you know, we gotta start thinking about where do we start? First thing you need to do is you need to start with a plan and that needs to be a comprehensive plan. Master Plan Report on Sanitary Storm Combined Sewers completed in nineteen sixty-one. I know that John Hodges is here this evening. They do what they call a two-on-one facilities plan where they look at their system and as they're, as they're growing and make sure they keep up with what they need to outside of, that's with growth, outside of what regulators are putting on them. City of Paducah, our storm sewer system, industry standards in design and development has all changed in the last fifty-five years. City is overdue for holistic study of a stormwater system, policies, ordinances and funding mechanisms. I will share with you that in nineteen eighty-nine, there was a stormwater study done, but it was only done for problematic areas in Paducah. It was not done from a comprehensive point of view. Stormwater, continuing with that, a document that provides a clear and concise explanation of the city's existing stormwater management program. We don't, we gotta identify what we have, what we need and where we're going. Presented detailed investigation into key components of the stormwater as it's related to the city of Paducah. Establish some stormwater management goals for the future. Create some tools to meet, exceed and establish those goals and provide a foundation for future policies and decisions. As you grow, your policies and decisions need to be, I guess, flexible and malleable that you can meet your growth. Clear and concise explanation of the city's existing stormwater management program. You're gonna need to schedule a kickoff meeting. Who are your stakeholders? Gather data, that's always important. Conduct interviews with city personnel, mayor with the system. Another thing we do is we would, you know, back in, when I was in the private sector, when we needed to know something about what drainage was doing near a highway, we would always go out and interview people that had long-term residents near a stream. They have, they have eyes, ears on the ground, they saw what happened, they would give you how the water went and give you that information. That's, that's key in solving some of these problems. Develop a database used to assess conditions in the city's current system. Detailed investigation into key components of the stormwater. We gotta analyze a lot of information, the basins, the systems, determine there are hydraulic constraints. Okay, hydraulic, that's just a fancy word for how much flow can we take? Okay? Identify major open channels with connecting to the city's storm sewer system. You recall earlier that we have a lot of water that is coming outside the city that flows through Paducah that finds its way to the Ohio River. A lot of areas we have, for example, you have Cross Creek, that's over in the Brook Stadium area, flows into Island Creek, and Island Creek drains thirty-three square miles outside the county, but it comes right, right here down on Third Street and crosses and it has to be pumped out when we have a high river. So you can kind of see that it's flowing through us, but we have to manage it. We have to identify the locations that show potential strategic value as definition of water quality, you know? In nineteen eighty-nine, the city of Paducah passed a stormwater management ordinance that dealt with volume. Okay? As water ran off, you know, like if you were to go to some places in town, you look and there's this big grass depression out in front of it, a lot of properties. I don't want to say anybody by name, but you drive by them all the time. Those are there to hold the additional runoff that's coming off a big parking lot and release it slowly into the system. Those are called stormwater detention basins. That program was introduced in nineteen eighty-nine, but it was more of a volumetric control. Now, we have quality. The Clean Water Act says, okay, now that you've got control of the volume, now we want you to clean it up before you let it go. So those are additional constraints that are being put on us, not by ourselves, it's by the federal government through the state to us. Establish goals for the future. We have to identify a group to improvements, projects for compatible improvement. Prioritize the capital projects for the next, how many years? You know, what's gonna come out of a study is you're gonna get a group of projects and, you know, you can't eat an elephant hole, you gotta eat one bite of, one bite at a time. So it's gonna take a lot of, I guess, input to say, where do we start that makes the biggest improvement and where is our biggest need? Some of the areas, you may not have a capacity problem, and I want to say that you may not have a capacity problem, but you might have an age problem. The system itself or the piping itself may be sized right to carry the flow, but it might be so old that it's caving in on itself, which doesn't allow any flow. So there's, there's a myriad of things that have to be looked at. Create tools to meet and exceed the goals, the stormwater master plan. We gotta do a lot of mapping. We gotta do a lot of population of different stormwater demands. There's just a lot of information has to be collect, collected, system development charge and a rate study. We're gonna come up with something here and I'm gonna, I've got, the next slide is, Rick, you're throwing a lot of stuff at us right now and that's gonna take something. That's gonna take some money eventually on that. Provide a foundation for future policy decisions, review and recommend updates to the city ordinances. Right now, you've got good ordinances in place. Your chapter fifty, you have good ordinances in place. Can they be upgraded, improved? Absolutely, everything can be improved. But I don't want any of you all to walk away from here this evening and think that we don't have good ordinances in place. It's just some things that may need to be improved. Recommend changes to design policies that provide supporting data for amending city requirements. You know, again, if we do have some things and maybe we want to be a little bit more stringent, or maybe we want to pay a little bit more attention in some other areas of those ordinances, we'll have to look at those. Stormwater master plan, we got project management, data gathering, a whole lot of information. I don't want to bore you too much with all of that. City, you're going down the city's plan, review policies regarding stormwater management. Talked about that. And then ultimately, if you saw the movie Jerry Maguire, you know, that's, that's where it's gonna come down to eventually. Possible solutions, let some, okay, you know, and I've heard Commissioner Rhodes, you make this comment with regard to other subjects that we have, you know, we just happen to be sitting here at this time and we have, we have this in front of us. And it's, it's eventually gonna be somebody, whether it's this group or another group, but let someone else deal with a problem. Is that gonna be us or is that gonna be something else? Occupational tax or property tax, generally, public is not favor of raising taxes. We all know that. Business or building license fee, wouldn't that, that wouldn't produce any revenue, that would be of any use, that would be, that would pay for this. Site plan erosion control, right-of-way permit fees. We don't have enough information coming through the office to collect any permits that would make a dent in this problem. Special assessment fees, special benefit to specific properties, user fees, system expansion to those paying a fee that do not have a storm sewer. I mean, for example, how do you do that? Somebody may not have a storm sewer, but are they gonna be included in a fee? And then you think about the best way to do this would be a stormwater utility. Okay, let's talk about stormwater utilities. Typically, it's a revenue-producing stream that everybody participates in. Primary role, own, manage, control and operate separate stormwater facilities within the city of Paducah. Okay? We'd need to establish a Paducah service, surface and stormwater utility fee. Under that, present provisions under current laws, under the Kentucky revised statutes that are listed there. City has the authority to establish a separate, an independent stormwater utility under the current statutes. I believe that when JSA was formed in nineteen ninety-nine, there was some discussion and some language written to their ordinance that allows for us to do it, but in the infancy of JSA, that wasn't put into JSA. They were just to take care of the county, and John, you correct me if I'm wrong here, they were to take care of the Paducah, McCracken County sanitary sewer needs, but if they needed to get bigger, they had the authority to do that under those, under that, or the city of Paducah could pursue it independently. Benefits, can generate funds to alleviate the cost of improvements. All users are subject to the fee. If you're a property owner, you'd be subject to the fee. The legal authority already exists to create the utility. Fees shall be uniform for residential classifications. We'll talk about that here in a minute. Obstacles, fees don't, shall not generate revenues or profits in excess of the reasonable costs associated with providing a public service. We don't, we're not here to make money, we're here to provide the service and to keep the system going. Takes political effort to pass, subject to court challenges. I mean, every time you try to do something, we're subject to litigation or somebody's saying, wait, you can't do that. If not properly advertised, can create opposition from the development of the community. So we have an education component to the, to the community about why this is necessary. I think we get an education to that component because after we have those horrendous events like July the seventh, you get that, but you get where people were hurt and harmed, but there's the bigger education component, especially when there's a fee, a user fee that may be imposed on everybody in the community and they gotta thoroughly understand what that fee is doing and what it's going for. Okay, you've heard this term before, equivalent residential unit. It's a term that's widely used, we refer to it as the ERU. And basically what you're doing is you're trying to look at averages of residential homes and then classify, you know, would we get out and measure the impervious area of each individual home? No, we don't have the manpower and the resources to do that. It could be done over time, but no, we don't have the manpower, resources to do it initially. So we would develop what they call an ERU. And you look at the rooftop, might be a thousand square feet, the driveway might be, you know, seven hundred square feet, the sidewalks, we're not gonna measure all that, but we would break it down into some reasonable amount, but this is all the things that come out of a study. Property classes, you got classes of property that, you know, you would identify X dollars per month for a Class A property, which is a residential property, but, and then for an impervious area yet to be determined. What is, what is a reasonable average area for a resident? Class B properties, you got commercial, commercial properties like your big boxes. I mean, we have acres and acres of parking lot, they produce a lot of runoff. For them, there would be a different way to charge them. It's not something that they're immune to, they're used to it across the country, but how we apply it would need to be what is, I guess, industry standard or what, what is reasonable. Also, for big boxes like that, there's, there's times where they can do things like put in what we call vortex separators. If they clean their water up before they release it, they get credits that help them on this side of the fence, on the volumetric side. Kentucky communities, a lot of times we compare ourselves with, you know, and just in this previous presentation, we were wondering what other communities are doing with regards to the previous presentation. We've looked at other communities, their ERU, if I can get this cursing, you notice their ERU varies quite a bit, I mean, from a low of twenty-five-hundred to a high of around four thousand. You also notice that their fee base varies quite a bit from two dollars up to three and four dollars. We've also looked at this for other communities that this is a very good, in my opinion, telltale sign of this because you'll notice the monthly rates are all over the board. They're all over the board. I mean, you look at Henderson, they're two dollars. You look at Hopkinsville, they're three dollars. Lexington, they're four sixty-three. Now, notice the difference between metropolitan areas. Louisville, seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Murray, dollar fifty. You'll see that these, these numbers are all over the board, so it's kind of hard to find the sweet spot in where you should be, but where you should be is where you can make an improvement. What works for another community may not work for Paducah, but it has to make sense. You know, that average line is three sixty. One thing I would point out here, Murray, I've talked, I just had a recent conversation with the Murray mayor and I asked him about this stormwater fund and he says, Rick, that money just comes in and we're not improving anything. Only thing that we're doing is we're paying the employees to enforce the regulations, but we're not making any infrastructure changes or improvement. The money is insufficient to do that. So we have to be very careful where we wind up here, that we're not paying to enforce something and we're not making improvements to our system that we know needs it. I think I pretty much covered that, I'm just gonna skip that. Okay? National averages, fourteen hundred ninety-one stormwater utilities in the United States. Not quite sure why some of these, I mean, they have the states and how many stormwater utilities they have. I noticed that Iowa had eighty-six and California had fifty-six. I couldn't make heads or tails of that, just knowing the difference between Iowa and California.
It's a little known fact, but Iowa's second only to Texas in the number of incorporated municipalities in the state.
Oh, I didn't know that piece. But it's not something, I guess, it's not something that's uncommon, but you'll notice your red states have zero. Don't, Louisiana, Mississippi, New York, I can't, I don't explain that, I'm just, I don't wanna know, I don't understand. Steps, need guidance on funding. We may need to enhance our articles in chapter fifty to pursue what is legally ours to pursue. Establish an ERU. A lot of this comes from many studies that we would do. Establish billing procedures, legal review, transfer operations, control of maintenance and assets, the surface drainage responsibilities to the Paducah surface and stormwater utility. That's just something we made up, we had, you know, we had to create an acronym there, PSSU, okay? Could help with expansions of flood wall operations. Again, anything that's tied to the storm sewer system within the grid is tied to your pump stations. JSA released the management and control of this utility by change in the JSA agreement with Paducah. Again, this might be some cleanup, it's not anything that we really intend for the JSA to do, it's just if there's any verbiage that needs cleaning up, we would look at that. Conclusions, the city's stormwater and drainage systems are in need of maintenance upgrades and some cases, replacement. We, we've heard that in this, in this forum, we all know that. A stormwater master plan is essential for laying the framework for implementation. A stormwater fee will help the city manage the stormwater expenses more efficiently. We don't have that, we don't have any revenue. We don't have that, we don't have any revenue stream right now. A path forward for Paducah's future regarding improvement in stormwater infrastructure has been presented before you this evening. Initiating that path forward requires visionary thinking, and ultimately, tough decisions that will need to be made by this board. Any questions?
And this is something that I think is very important to the city of Paducah, and I think we, we made a promise in a way to those people that showed up that night, to work on an upgrade of our stormwater system, and I think the path that you've lined out here is the proper way to approach this.
Well, Mayor, the-
It won't be quick, it won't happen quick.
No, and it needs to be done, and Jeff and I have had a lot of conversation about this, you know, we can look at our problem areas and identify our problem areas, but with the age of our infrastructure, we have to look at this as a comprehensive plan. In 89, it was not looked at as a comprehensive plan, it would only address some issues in town, and we've corrected a lot of those problems, but there's still a lot of things that are left undone. The thing that concerns me the most, as your city engineer and public works director, is the fact that I know how old these things are, and John and I, John and I have seen the insides of pipes, you have what they call vetrified clay pipe, it's the old orange bird, orange-looking pipe, and as that pipe gets older, it breaks, and then, a lot of times, you'll be driving down the road, and you'll hit a, you'll hit a little, little depression in the road, a little sink, it's not a sinkhole yet, but it's a little depression in the road. Actually, what you have going on is some type of storm or sanitary sewer conveying failure, and we're going around fixing those, but if we have this continue to go on and we don't start fixing things a little bit at a time and identifying those areas that we need to fix a little bit at a time, we're going to find ourselves, I don't know, not in a good spot. For example, your paving program, we see a bad road, we fix a bad road. The pipes are underground, we have to identify those pipes that are in need of repair and identify those pipes that need to be upsized, and have a funding mechanism to proceed forward.
The study that was done in 1989, so you said you did take some steps that were recommended then?
Yes.
But you haven't done everything?
No, we haven't done everything because some of the things were not studied to the extent that they may need it to be. A lot of those, Commissioner, were addressing surface drainage, when the creeks areas, we addressed a whole lot of that in the Brooks Stadium, 25th Street area, some of those areas, like, for example, 28th Clay area, 30th and Clay, that's a low area that's tied to a big combined sewer, a big project, a big-money project, we didn't, we didn't tackle those. We tackled those that we could do incrementally, and they, back then, we were putting $50,000 a year to address some small problems. Right now, today, and Jeff said it a few weeks ago, currently, in your operational budget, we spend $60,000 a year for stormwater maintenance and repair. That, that's not good.
I think approximately a third of the projects, third of the total project projected cost was accomplished, and I think, as I best understand it, the city had a pile of money sitting around that was able to address some of that stuff with at the time, but, I mean, this, this plan is really much building from the ground up.
Correct.
Putting in place a system to manage something that doesn't really have dedicated resources behind it, all the way from data to staff to money, so it is a very comprehensive approach, but hopefully, this presentation tonight helps people understand the enormity of it, but also the systemic nature of that system, the knee bones connected to the thigh bone, and it's all connected, you know, that's very much part of how this works. So to do something like was done in 89, I think, would just to, in a sense, do something for a period of time that might plug a few holes, but is not a long-term approach, and would leave us right back to wondering how we would go about it next time, from a resource point of view. So this is essentially a proposal to establish a dedicated identity for stormwater management, it would probably become a division within the Public Works Department, but it needs a dedicated source of revenue as well for these objectives to be, to be able to be carried out.
Yeah, and-
Well, I was just going to say, to use your analogy of the knee bone connected to the, there's one, yeah, exactly, that's the confusing part for me, because I'm sitting on the JSA board, and I understand on the top is the city's responsibility, and once it goes into the main, is JSA's responsibility.
Not necessarily, if it goes into a combined main.
I, I-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, yeah. But, but are we going to coordinate together, are we going to have these conversations, are we not?
Absolutely, absolutely, it's, it's something that has to be done, because exactly as Jeff stated on that, is even though, okay, like in Louisville, they're a metropolitan sewer district, once it goes into the sewer system, it doesn't matter whether it's sanitary, storm, or floodwall.
Right.
Metropolitan sewer district deals with it all. The way we're configured here is JSA handles the sanitary and combined flows.
Right.
We have the independent flows, but the system itself, as Jeff stated, is physically connected because at certain times, at certain times, when that combined sewer cannot take anymore, it relieves itself into another sewer or another drainage path.
Yeah, look at it this way, by adding more capacity to the stormwater, we don't think we are creating any burden for the sanitary sewer in general, and that's really what this is all about, and that capacity can be anywhere from intake, collection, to carrying, to actually pumping as well, and that's where the interconnectivity of all that, and you have to be sized properly between those three components for all of them to function at optimum efficiency as well as capacity, and as Rick mentioned out there, mentioned, there are pieces of this system that lie out there that haven't even been connected, lying out there for 50, 60, 70 years that weren't even connected, so that's why a comprehensive approach to this is really needed, because it's never really happened before.
And I guess, the one graphic, though, that did say a lot was the boat. You are liable to hear, you know, well, I'm in, I'm on the high ground, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a flooding problem. You might need to just look in those areas of those people that have a flooding problem. Well, the thought behind that might be a little bit selfish, but it might also need to be thought, the water has to come from the heavens, it comes to your ground, it runs off at a certain rate because of your improvement, you happen to be there, but we all are in the same boat.
Every piece of property in the community is displacing water to some degree.
I think every, I think we all understand that the, the infrastructure issues is a responsibility of the municipal, so, I mean, we, we have to, we have to deal with it, it's a big problem with a big price tag on it, and I guess, it doesn't matter whether we're here or whoever's sitting here, it's, it's been a problem for a long time, and there has been some, you know, Band-Aid approach put to it, but you don't want to be driving down the road and, and the street fall in because you got pipes that'll just deteriorate, so we have to do what we, what we need to do for the citizens of the city, I think that's what's expected of us. So, it's a good presentation.
Thank you. Again, Eric Hickman, done, a young man, done an outstanding job of putting this together, and he and I went through this the other day, and I praised him for that, and I'm like, you know, I wish you would were there to do that presentation so you could show your face in front of the commission, but his priority needs to be at his family right now, so, but again, if you see Eric, compliment him on his, on his putting this together.
He'll, he'll have plenty of opportunity to come forward.
Well, there's, there's certain times I'd like to put Eric out there in front rather than me.
Well, I was, I wasn't, if I might remind the commission that in our presentation a couple of weeks ago, we indicated that there were monies that were available to use for the conduct of a study, from a couple of potential sources, unappropriated reserve monies of the general fund, and then some project monies that have not been used, so what we'd like to do is proceed to develop an RFP and send it out and start a process. At some point in time, approaching a decision to let a contract, we would need to appropriate that money, I'd like to think that could be before the new budget sets in, but it may not be, we could perhaps handle it through the budgeting process, but I'm assuming that if this can proceed quickly, you'd like us to be able to proceed quickly, meaning that there possibly would be that we would amend this year's budget and appropriate that money so we could let a contract as soon as we can and not necessarily wait until after July 1 for that, would that be a fair read?
It is with me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very important issue. And I feel better after having Rick's presentation, because, you know, it's just one of those things that hang over the heads of everyone, and especially the people that are terribly impacted by it, but I think everyone understands the problem that we have and that there needs to be a solution, and I, I mean, I know that no one likes to pay an extra amount per month, but if I had been in the position of some of these people, I would much rather pay a fee per month and still have my house and not be flooded two to three times within a few years' period. I just think it makes sense. Thank you. Any commission comments? Public comments? City manager's report, sorry.
Briefly and relatedly, Mayor Kayla, Rick and I are traveling to Washington on Friday with representatives of the Corps of Engineers of Louisville to talk about our floodwall project and to get the process of getting that reauthorized started. We are continuing to look at the, our ability to do a project through the city itself with the Corps as a partner, but a project that would be done ahead of the time when federal appropriations would become available, we think the timing there is that critical. The next that will come before you on that will be a workshop presentation sometime over the next three to four weeks, when we want to talk to you specifically about a floodwall project involving pump station two, what we kind of alluded to last time we were together, that would be funded by the city, but made eligible for federal reimbursement at the time when the federal appropriation process would begin. So we're putting a lot of effort into that, and we believe that pump station number two is a project of the utmost importance, and the timing is such that we simply do not believe we can wait indefinitely until federal appropriations materialize, despite the best efforts to make that happen. Want to mention one other thing related to some of this pre-budget capital improvement planning, we have made a little better effort this year to talk about potential funding sources for projects, and we kicked some of those around, or not so much kicked around, but identified what some of those might be in the prior discussion. Questions come up about what of our projects might be eligible for community development block grant funding, and there are a couple that are on that shortlist that you have of 12 that we think might be, and in fact, one of them is the floodwall project. We think that there is a good prospect of eligibility for state block grant funding for some portion of that, so that's very encouraging. Another one that's on that list is roof replacement at the Parks Building, it's actually proposed to replace only half of that in the short term and half later, but the belief is that at some point in time, the whole roof will have to be replaced. It's also been determined that that particular project is something also that sets itself up very well for eligibility for community development block grant funding, so I wanted to share that with you all tonight as well.
I've had a question on community development block grant funding about, like, community projects that could possibly be considered for that, how would they apply for it, or?
Well, it becomes a priority basis for the commission in terms, because ultimately, they can either go in through the city or the county, the governmental body, so it's, it's really a matter of what the commission's priorities are for submission of those projects. We've had some projects that were outside the city budget or, you know, city direct responsibility, and some that have been inside. Remember, a couple of years ago, the elevators at the retirement home were replaced, the most recent one, of course, has been 432 Broadway, which, which is a city project, so we've done both, we've done both, but there, you know, there are some years where there are projects that are at the forefront, other years where they're not.
So how, how would they go about getting on a priority list, I mean, how, do we, do we have a current priority list for that? You've mentioned several projects.
Well, I would like to be able to talk a little bit more when we come forward on the floodwall project about the prospect for block grant funding there, and I would think that in the first instance, you would look at what projects the city has in terms of budgetary responsibilities, so we'd like to be able, when we have that workshop in the next three or four weeks, to tell you as much as we can tell you about how that lends itself to a CDBG grant award, and what the timing might be, if it'd be the next cycle or the one after, those kind of things.
Are we limited to a certain amount per year?
Yeah, there are different categories with different thresholds.
Do you all want more information on CDBG grants, or?
Well, I think it's important to prioritize what they're going to be used for, and I guess, you know, people ask, how could a community organization apply for one from us, so, I mean, if, if we're only locked in on city, then we just tell them no, or if there's an application process that they could go through?
Well, again, and I'm not sure when the submission deadlines, or I think they're false submissions, aren't they, Steve?
I think they're, I think they're now being checked.
Yeah, so I think we've got a little time to work through this here, to know if, if we in fact have a project that we think needs to go in, so, and again, those are the two that we think are the most fitting for the eligibility requirements, be your decision if you want to do either of those, but again, we're committed to a process that hopefully will get to a decision point on, on both of those within next two or three months, sure.
Okay, any, okay, I've already asked public comment, is that all you have, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We don't have an executive session tonight, so meeting's adjourned.